Well, I do show 7:00 PM on clock here. What are we going? Panda is connected via the Ring Central link and they are recording. So they're out there. She just does not stand by the computer, but as you will know, we are recording. So good evening, everybody. Welcome. 7:00 PM on April 12th, 2021. It's time for the April meeting of the Village of Red Oak Village Board or our main monthly meeting. And we've had a lot going on since March. We'll welcome our newest member tonight and then our newly elected and reelected members. There's Mr. Lang. Couple welcoming. We are recording Charlie. For the public watching for the first time, you'll see one new face and one relatively new and then some more familiar faces. The newest is Mal Corca Carval. She's of course a village resident and won election to a four-year term. And we welcome her. She's already hard at work on certain tasks and contracting. Just so you all know, we did, they have formally signed their oath of office and we had a nice social event on April 3rd. Where Justice Treebuster and a bunch of us got together and a little more social and fun type of a day for the newly elected and reelected folks. So again, we'll do a lot of work tonight and this one, like I've been warning, it's a lot going on in this season for the villages in general. I thought we'd do just to stay street legal as we open all these virtual meetings now. We are in compliance with the executive orders written and allowed in the COVID era here, in particular 2021 and continuing. So it's being recorded. It's available as transcript and so forth in compliance with those rules and regulations. I do like to just, even though I see all the faces, just make a record that we're all here. So I'll call quasi attendance. The village clerk is out there too. She's muted. She's here. She's checked in. So just call for attendance. Ed Blondell speaking. I'm here. Mr. Kovalchuk.
Yeah.
Mr. Noonan.
Here.
Ms. Carval.
Here.
And Mr. Lang.
Here.
So we have a full five member board attending and thank you. What we'll do is, like I said, it's in the reorg world, we'll be touching on that, but everybody is sworn in. Sometimes at the actual reorganization meeting, we would do a version of that social event where we have the justice here and so forth. So we broke that into more COVID safe, smaller group sessions and that is under our belt. So all the people listed as present that are on the board are fully empowered and authorized to work and vote on issues tonight. What I thought we do is just looking over the printed agenda and so forth. We'll skip the minute approval for right now. We'll do that when we open the main meeting, but we did post at 7:00 PM a public hearing on our village budget. I'm looking to the right of my participant screen. I see board members. I do not at this moment see anybody from what would be the general public. We can wait a bit, but I can do a little intro in a moment. First though, the meeting itself, we're opening and I like to just do sub opening of the actual public hearing. So I would move, it shows 7:03 PM. I've moved that we open our required public hearing on the 2021-2022 Village of Red Oak budget. Is there a second?
Second.
I don't think pretty much discussion on this, but all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. I'm seeing some names flash as we speak, but I'll do a general intro. The board will recall, we sat in some workshop sessions and did use our Excel spreadsheet modeling program. And I sat with the treasurer separately. As a precursor, we did work with all the department managers and department heads. See what they would want on a wish list or what they definitely needed and incorporate that. We look at our tax base and any changes over the last fiscal year. We will be our revenue side. We looked at the tax cap, which we all know is at 1.31% this year. We try to project based on our history of revenue and expenses, what the next year can and should be. We've gotten pretty good at it, but we can't get too cocky because there's always something that's going to swing around and knock you. This year being COVID, that'll segue me into a few things, but on the big picture, the tentative that we've sent around in PDF format to the board remains what we'll be talking about tonight. And our big fund is general fund. A water fund and a sewer fund. Those two are more enterprise budget lines, but that it means they're self-funded based on the rate pay themselves. It's not a general tax to the property owner. People on our water system, whether they be village residents or town residents, pay a rate per gallon for water. And that's set in our rules and regulations. We have the ability to change that. And similar, we passed a sewer law where that's a budget that's starting to incur some expenses, but it's not really an operational sewer system at this point in time. Tonight, we'll primarily concentrate on the general fund. And with all our work to date and our projections, we have the tentative coming in below the 1.31% tax cap. We look at what that is. And in our case, it's not a lot of money increased from the prior year, but we'll, we'll work with it. What it means for us is we're still on that threshold of closely monitoring and examining and watching our expenses. Like I mentioned to the board, next year, 2022-23, the administration has the good fortune of the building bond going away on this building where I'm sitting right now. And that's about a $235,000 expense that goes away, which is a pretty nice thing to have happen. But we can't do much with that this year because we still have to pay this year's expenses on that. Two thoughts to remind the board. Once we have a tentative budget, it's set in, we'll call it mud. We can modify it, but any modifications come via the way of formal motion and discussion. I've noticed two things I think we need to talk about. They're really not major at all. And I'm saying this as description if anybody from the public is listening, but it's also for us as a board for later. We have a revenue line for chips. That's the state program. Helps us get money to rebuild our, essentially our road infrastructure is primarily what we use it for. We ask our highway foreman to look at our various lane miles and who needs the upgrade in any given year is determined pretty much by him, but working with all of us. And we had an tentative budget put $110,000 and that was from letters we received from New York State DOT and so forth. But about three weeks ago or so, we got another letter where they reduced that and it seemed like it was in sync with the states reducing it across the board to municipalities. So Brent and I did some math. He's got it noted in his monthly report, but essentially rounded the numbers 91,000 being made available to us versus 110. So we'll work with that. And the good part is it doesn't really change any of our tax cap implications. Because you all might recall, we booked 91, we booked 110 in and 110 out. So the net effect is zero. So whatever number we put, as long as the net effect is still zero. We do that. So just to test on our model, I did it earlier today. And if you put 91 in revenue and 91 in expenses, that's where we go. And our operating motif has been, we don't spend, as a rule, we don't spend more in chips than we're actually getting in in chips funding. So that's one thing when we get to the main part of the meeting, let's talk about that. Another thing as a board, we touched on was the American Rescue Plan put forth by great help from Senator Schumer and the new administration. We're projecting over two years, we might get about $215,000, $218,000 via some funding transfers from the town. Like I said, it's split each year. We don't know that number at this point, and I'm going to recommend that we pick within the budget, a revenue line. We have, I have to find it here myself, A2770. It's unclassified in parentheses specify. We could put a number later in there. I think we just have to concur. I mean, I don't want to pick a number because we're not sure how we're going to spend it and we're not sure where we're going to get it. But what I'd like the board to consider is that when we get it, we will be able to separately, not tonight, but separately determine all our COVID related losses and actual direct expenses. What I mean by that is certain revenues are down for us, in particular, some of from the outside sources like school resource officer. With schools being less open, there's less billing, commensurate with less expense, but they don't match up dollar for dollar. Same thing with town court. We build a revenue stream there and there's been no town court for a year. But we build our expense budget for police based on our projected revenue budget. So those will be shortfalls, even though right now police salary looks online for year to date and so forth. It's going to be, there's going to be a hole there and we'll know that better when the year actually ends. And for those who've been around more, what we do is toward year end, we, we get a really good idea of where the shortfalls are. And we have to actually make budget adjustments and we'll develop a number and then we'll, my thinking is we'll charge that against the ARP number. And that's what it's designed to do. Then whatever is left, we'll have to think of how we can best help the street. And one of the goals, especially for the bigger funded agencies like the counties and so forth, are to try to put some programs out that'll help economic recovery. But our piece, it's not big enough that we're going to jumpstart the village's economy. And from what we gather is many of the merchants are stable. It's actually, I'm surprised a little bit how most of them were answering a survey we sent out with our town EDC. They seem to be holding their own even in the year we've gone through. By the way, that's sort of introductory. I was doing a little illustration for whoever might be listening from the public. Since, I guess I'll ask just in case our technology is not showing, remember the public. The way we generally do a public hearing is people raise their hand, but I don't see anybody raise a hand. But if you're out there, you could say your name and your voice if you're not showing on our list here for some reason. I know I'm talking and I see some heads acknowledging that they can hear me. You guys can all hear me, right?
Yes. Oh, Ed and the board. I was saddened to see that Modern Taco has closed for business.
Yeah.
It was a surprise to me.
Yeah, we could talk about it for a moment. We had heard they were looking at doing something. If I recall, I think they bought the building and they might be going to a different business idea to make money from the building instead of cooking downstairs, something. But our hip little mini restaurant there was like, if you've been to Philadelphia, sometimes there's these tiny restaurants. Like you wonder how they get enough people in them, but you turn them over now enough, I guess. They had good food and good, good everything. But yeah, we'll see what happens there next.
Great cocktails.
Yeah. I don't want to say that, but but anyway, folks, I see our core group still on here and I think we can move on by closing the public hearing. We'll work more on a budget tonight is my plan and my goal, where we'll get into doing what I described on a couple of those lines. And maybe before we close, if, if any board member had any specific question or thought, we'll talk about it later in the real body of the meeting, but it might give me a precursor. If there's something you're thinking about. Attent to side step water and sewer, but since they're not in the tax cap and since they are, in my opinion, self-sustaining by rate. We do have to deal with them later tonight, but we're not at this point in time doing anything different in the rates on either of those. That all being reviewed, I would say at 7:14, we've had no public comment, no questions pending. I would move that we close the 2021-2022 budget public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kovalchuk. Okay. This one will actually close, not like others. We might've been part of where we keep them open or pending. It's tonight's the night and we will, the motion is second. I'll call roll just for Blondell. Although yes, Ms. Carval.
Carval. Yes.
Mr. Kovalchuk.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. The session is closed. And let me flip back to get that done. Like I said, our reorg sessions were part of what I'll call a normal meeting. So we'll open that as is our custom. Since we're all remote, we don't have the benefit of the ability to do any pledges to the flag or anything. But I think we'd like to, as a board, acknowledge and thank our first responders and medical providers who are still hard at work. And the death toll is about 562,000 across the country. And here in New York, we have a, it seems to be somewhat subsiding, subsiding. But we have, I think we owe them all a moment of thanks and silence. So let's do that for a moment. Okay. Thank you. In my set of papers, I've been able to see and read minutes from two meetings. I have two that are pending in PDF format that have not been circulated. The ones we've been able to push out of the March 8th, which is our main meeting from March and the April 1 meeting, which was fairly recent. And that was the bond resolution meeting, which all of us were part of. I remember reading them both and getting them out. So what I was going to do, folks, on the agenda as far as minute approval. I think we can do March 8th and then April 1. I would hold off on the other two because like I said, they're in PDF format. And there's some edits and corrections I saw that I'd like to get into format I can work on and get them. We can do that at our workshop in three days from tonight. So I would move that we approve the minutes from March 8th, 2021 and April 1, 2021. Are there any other additions, alterations or corrections before we move ahead on that? Yeah. So I move, we approve them. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good. When I, is that your course? Okay. Thank you. Let me just check off that. Now the infamous reorg session. I'm going to move after bringing my famous blue book and a few papers here. When I say the blue book, it's the steering binder from the conference of mayors. What we're going to do, the certain pro forma, I keep using the word, I keep using the word mundane, but there are things we have to do every year at this time. We have confirmed that the newly elected and reelected are sworn in. What we'll do is work through and part of me is that we have to work together here in a couple of components of it. Just so we can get the best sample of the interest of the newly elected board member and those reelected and what we're up to. And what I mean by that is rather than me trying to figure each piece of it out, I thought we might resort some of our responsibilities, which is we show on one document here, Board of Trustees Department Responsibilities. And then there's another set of documents that are appointment lists. And what we'll talk about now is on the appointment side, this cycle, there's very few appointments. Most people are already seated in their planning boards, owning board of appeals positions with terms that are not expiring this year. What I tried to do was go through my yellow marker and pick where there are changes. I'll highlight them. And then we'll have some discussion on how to best assign each other, where we want to be and what our best task will be from our background or experience and our interests. So we'll work on that. The big thing, if you look at the appointment list, it's going to get out there early was Larry Hart has indicated she would like to move to an interim position of acting clerk. Well, I just want to put that to the board on what that means essentially is she intends to stay employed with us, but work more and now very, very busy building and zoning department and then do the admin work she does with the PD. So that'll be a change we want to highlight. Looking through the rest of the sheet, unless somebody sees something I missed, the other things remain the same. In many cases here, we're not reappointing employees. We're just listing sort of a roster here. In other words, you'll see on that page that I'm looking at, he was a sergeant police department, Patrick Hillman. We're not re-upping him or re-enlisting him. He's, he's employed. He's a civil service employee. It's not, you know, we're not, we don't have that power. One thing our treasurer pointed out, full-time police officer, Daniel Riffenberg, he has an H at the end of his name. So that's a minor thing. With our other committees, like I said, the key ones will be zoning and planning. These were committees, really boards that are some more formal situation. Like I said, none of them are timing out. Looks like next reorg in a year from now, there'll be a few that are timed out that need reappointment. In the Village Green Committee, what we have there is, there's a new name, a third name down. I've typed in and again, I don't know what version there's, we're listing Kathy Pearson, David Pearson, Brian Foran, F O R A N. Brenda Cagla, Ex officio, and Dave Jossikus would be, that's our green slash tree planting committee. So Foran is somebody Brent is recommending to me as a new resident with interest and we love those people. So we'll put them in. Human Relations Committee, these are the big things. We, in the course of the past year and our police reform project, made a commitment and will stand by, we want to create some sort of committee that'll pick up on the street level, issues, ideas, energy and bring them to the board with regard to any human relations, issues, conflicts, positives. And what I was doing here was picking from our stakeholders group and I've spoken with these people individually and they've agreed to do it. They're all village residents. They've expressed the interest and we'll let them go. But we've, meaning what I said, let them go. A lot of their mission will be to work with us. We'll let them get going and help frame up what they see what they want to do and how the interactions will occur. I'm seeking to name David Mercusin Weiss, Lauren Cherry and Mal Corca Carval. Mal Corca would be the liaison between that committee. Then another thing with closer to a lot of our hearts, we're going to call something the Parks and Public Art Initiative Committee. We've got some interested, again, new residents and a lot of us have had this interest, but now we have some people that we can task a little bit to help us with, with some of the ideas. In that world, I'm recommending that we appoint Perry Allen, who's a new village resident. I say new, relatively new. And he comes with a background from similar project with public space, public art. And they also have an interest in many of our hearts. We consider the pond behind the Red Oak in libraries theoretically future public space of some sort. It's not at the moment, but somehow we'd like to get it there. Perry's really interested in working with that. And I thought the liaison there would be Brent because he, you know, he and I have been real active over the years. And we each have memories, not individually going back to 1889, but we have papers and a lot of research. We know a lot about that pond.
And Mal Cork has also expressed interest in that committee.
Well, that's a good segue because as I was putting in names and thinking, well, I mean, even though Mal Corca and I had to sit down and Charlie and I worked together and Noonan and I, you know, let me just get a little flow. And I thought as a group, even though we're not in the same room, get an idea. So if you go back to titled Board of Trustees Department Responsibilities, there's the mayor position. As you know, I do intend to be retiring and resigning in the not too distant future, but still necessary and important that I keep all my functions going. And then as a segue, I told some of you individually, I think we'll work on the details of transition and so forth more at our workshop meeting in three days. But with Deputy Mayor Kovalchuk, I, of course, want to appoint him deputy mayor. So that's, you know, he's earned it and he does hard work. And Brent, maybe if you look there, we always had you in highway department and what we call infrastructure. And then there I threw in parks and public art as, in the years past, we always had you as our unofficial, not poet laureate, but architect laureate. So we always threw the word architecture in there just to keep the street motif right. So to me, quite frankly, some of that parks, public art architecture, they're kind of all related in the Village Green. Noonan's been working planning zoning department, veteran affairs, emergency services. And for instance, this week he and I met with the fire company on the renewal of a two-year fire protection contract. And we've had individual meetings since then. We'll bring some ideas to the board in the workshop on Thursday too. Mal Corca. So here I do have on this sheet, Parks Public Art. And I was like, and then I was looking at, she's our newest member, but the list was getting ran along on some of her tasks. What I would like to do is as a group, let me just read them out and then we'll go to Charlie. And what I'm getting, I told some of you individually, I think there's some overlap between the two and we're not trying to define or limit people. It's more like, how do we make everything work together? So in my Corca's world, we're thinking parks, public art. What I'm calling community programs operations, sitting with her, there's a lot of new interest in farm markets, different things that I kind of view as celebratory. But I think they fall into that category. Was it, we can broaden it by community programs, whether it be something with Reddit together, the library, the village. We tend not to do things on our own. We provide logistical and the, how would you say, like certain authorities? We have, we can enable street use and so forth, which is good. One of our key things, we've taken some steps is we've got this couple of year old website now that we built and consorted with the town. Mal Corca's from a really good, from what I can see, high-tech tech background is really good at that part of what we need here. So I like to put, I'm calling it communications. It's somehow, how do we better move from panda analog meetings to whatever the web and internet can do with it, with our website or other resources? What can we do to work that up to our best advantage? Then like we said earlier, the Human Relations Committee and Jen used to do what we call library relations. The word appears twice there, but it's library interaction, something on, because there's some key players in our village. And libraries, one, the community center, I would say bard, merchant group. So we're looking to work with that. So library relations and in there, we were one of the key founding members of Reddit together, which really is a composite of many of those names I just said, Bard, community center, school district, town. They tend to meet during the day. They used to be lunchtime meetings. We used to host many, many of them here, Brent and I. And it's a great, great group. We've been a little bit distracted with some of our other projects lately. But um, Corca indicated willingness, I recall from our sitting together, right? But so, so there's a lot there for her. Then Charlie, Charlie Lang, we want to concentrate, to be honest, Charlie was talking to Igor Cast Nelson today. He's our NIPA man. I don't know if you remember that name, but uh, we're reinvigorating our LED streetlight project. He's going to mail me a bunch of stuff and some new rates and some new this and that. It's like
Oh, good.
And it's a, it hasn't arrived yet today, but when it comes in, I'll forward it. You remember the spreadsheets that we had? It sounded like they're going to update things.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a fair amount of updating that needs to happen since we started that project.
Yeah. So that's what I'm calling energy sustainability. It's kind of a broad brush. And this is one of the questions in my mind, our page, you throw garbage system. And this is one of the questions in my mind, our page you throw garbage system is a sustainability concept, project enterprise that um, and Jen, who is not on the board anymore, worked on that, but it still needs some attention. Uh, it doesn't just happen by itself like snow plowing does or certain things is. So I know if we toss a coin, pull straws. My car is prepared to report tonight on the data. But uh, I thought. Charlie, I think. You know, going forward, we do push it in, like I said, do we do composting? We always look at these things. I kind of think it segues a little bit more into facilities, water, sewer, and it's, it's kind of a version of half infrastructure, half uh. Half environmental oriented.
I think that will be fine.
Okay.
I will be happy to take on the the former materials management side of things.
I think we'll let Mal Cork at tonight. She's probably prepared to recite some numbers. So we'll let her, she had a report, so. And then we'll get Charlie in the loop as far as. The monthly work isn't hard. It's just mainly trying to invent systems and remind folks that it's really a worthwhile system and.
It is. I I take part of it and I will use this opportunity to twist my neighbor's arm to take advantage of it, too.
So that being said, maybe Mal Cork, if we go back um to parks and public art initiative. It sounds like we put Mal Cork's name there with Perry Allen and Brent. And um. And then, let's see. And Charlie on the one page will just put material management. So. The changes, changes as mayor, I'm going to recommend, but as in most cases, we um. Work collegially and interact. So I think we blended a couple of the open items. Is that from people's perspective or reading things that we hit them? We're still on that. Was a area of appointments. Will, like I said, he's been helping on those areas already. I don't know if there's anything you're hungry to get into, Mr. Noonan and Brent. Yeah, as deputy mayor, essentially the mayor and deputy mayor touch everything. You know, a key thing for everybody members, these are like your areas of expertise, responsibility, but we work together as a board and nobody's alone on this. It's like, you know, we, we. You report in and we, we make group decisions based on your unique meetings or knowledge or things you bring in, sources. Circulate like you see me, you know, like if you see information, articles, stories, news, try to pass that along amongst ourselves. Keep ourselves as current as we can. But anyway, let's, that was that part. Let me go through a few other pieces and you'll see in your packet, I put what's called a consolidated reorganization resolution. So we don't have to do a resolution on every one of those things. We'll just uh, forward. So good things I have to talk about official newspaper. I would recommend we again designate the Kingston Daily Freeman. I think it's nobody knows who's actually reading printed newspapers to any great extent. But I think they're our best source as far as Kipsey Journal is a little too far away. I think people up in our corner tend to be more in tune with Kingston Freeman. Dates for regular meetings, we, I think we circulated, but um. We of course work with open meetings, but it's always the village board meeting is the second Monday and the third Thursday that will continue that. And then when we need extra work, special meetings, we always do that. And but that's what everybody's input and concurrence on a good date that works. We will not, um, let's see. Just going to that page, procurement policy. What the rules are is that as mayor, I have to remind the board and employees that the village does have a formal written procurement policy. It's embodied in our village code. It can be seen online and I'm not sure if it's made our printed red code books. I'm looking here, but it's definitely online in our online version of E code three sixty for village Red Hook. We did a lot of work probably two years ago on that to update it and it is a Bible. Much of what we do is financially related and my job was just to remind you that procurement policy has to be complied with. There's a piece of um, we don't use it too often, but if a person, a board member or employee uses personal vehicle for village business, we incorporated a resolution that says we pay them at the then current IRS mileage rate. So it's, that changes like, you know, based on CPI and cost, cost of living. So we just frame it that whatever the current, when that bill's, that expenses incurred, they can bill. Those of us that sign vouchers, it's very rare that we usually, if, if you drive over twenty miles one way, something like that'd be worth it, but it's not really designed to drive the village wall and back that kind of thing. So. Another important one is designating depositories. It's incorporated in a consolidated motion that will be staying with our banks, Key Bank and M and T Bank. They are where we put our money, even though we borrow once in a while from Salisbury Bank, we don't put money in Salisbury Bank. We use them as a bonding or loan source. So as I read the rate, the rules, we just name and we continuously have a key bank because it's so handy, so close. We are working with them. You remember when we did the budget, they are starting to charge us fees. And I got some official explanation and it sounds legitimate, but uh, we did budget for bank fees this year, so. And. Another thing within our policy reminder point is um. Also in our code are our compliance efforts and reminders to do, make sure we all stay above board and honest with regard to ethics. The biggest thing is to remind folks, it's not appropriate to take any gift from any person doing business with the village in excess of seventy-five dollars. That's actually in the code. We're all expected, if we have some sort of personal business relationship that could benefit, we would have to make that public at a meeting and recuse or have it examined by council before a vote and so forth. And they're pretty much common sense, but um. One part is we have something circulating now with Nymer. Within policies, we, the village complies with state and federal sexual harassment, workplace safety, workplace violence prevention policies. And one of those requirements is that we um. Do annual updating. We used to be able to run them here by lunch and do it. And then those that couldn't attend would have the opportunity to do an online version. This year we've circulated to everybody and people are responding and signing up through our insurance company. And I think the next ones are in May. I forget the exact dates we've circulated, but there's some coming up and we did push them. At first they were only offering them for evening classes. I was like, hey, most of our employees are paid people. It's like you can't expect them to work at night. So they put some there in the daytime and I know people are signing up and Larry's coordinating something on that. So. That's pretty much it for the reorg, reorg part. So I was trying to, I'll read something that's pretty short here. It's a resolution. I'm calling a broad form consolidated reorganization steps. We're acknowledging, whereas the Board of Trustees Board has received and reviewed various annual reorganization documents and needs to include the bank depository authorization, miles reimbursement authorization, meeting schedules, official newspaper, and the mayor's appointees slash officers designations with any new appointments listed. And whereas the board is meeting in remote virtual format on April twelfth and in compliance with executive order two oh two one. And whereas the board is aware of the existing ethics code and procurement code as embodied in our village red code book and is reminded of same. Whereas board intends to complete the annual reorganization with consolidated voting and move to other businesses. I put a resolutions section here. The board designates the following institutions as depositories for all monies received by the village treasurer, clerk, receiver of taxes or other departments. Key Bank and M and T Bank approves the mileage reimbursement for twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two at the IRS rate in effect. Acknowledges review and familiarity with the ethics code and procurement code of the village Red Hook. Appoints the Kingston Daily Freeman as the official newspaper. Renews its meeting schedule as indicated in the documents and approves the mayor's appointments as circulated on the sheets. I'll move and we can talk for concurrence or discussion. What I'm trying to do is hit every one of those things in one page and get done. Like I said, just to repeat on the appointments, we're naming those two new committees. Larry's looking to move to acting. We have some new names in the Village Green Committee. So those are really, the changes, changes, you know, we still keep the same village history and different things. And I would offer that we adopt this resolution and you just see, I think Lara might have numbered it here. It's not numbered on my, this copy. Yeah, it looks like it would be resolution ten. Of twenty twenty-one. So. I would move that the board. Adopt resolution ten, known as consolidated reorganization, broad form resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other thoughts or discussion? All right. I'll do a roll call just so we have it. So. Check second to be made it. Yes, Mr. Kovalchuk.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Is trouble.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Okay, good. We are duly reorganized. All right. Reinvigorated. Let's see where I put that over there. Let me find my agenda. Get into the next thing. Well, now it's the more normal monthly business, piece of it. The treasurer has been on here, I think, Mr. Toll. We are what, six weeks away from the end of our fiscal year and uh. It's always the time of year when the budgets are most key and most stressful. Mr. Toll, you want to report in?
Well, yeah, um. The uh, account balances as of the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-one. Uh, the general fund is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and one cent. I, I just wanted to bring up that in the first week of of April, we actually had a number of large inputs of cash from various sources, one of which was mainly the property tax from twenty twenty. And the total actually came to about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in the first week. And as a result of that, the general fund today is is closer to four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And if you approve the bills that are to be paid of about forty, fifty-five thousand dollars. We will have about four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in the general fund. So the, the number today is is significantly higher by about seventy-five thousand dollars uh, compared to the general fund number that I just gave you for the end of March. Uh, the water fund uh, at the end of March, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. Trust and agency, twenty thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-three cents. Petty cast, twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. Billy Green, four thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents. Hardscrabble, two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Health insurance, two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-three cents. Sewer fund, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. And the capital fund, there's nothing in it and it will be closed out. Uh, in terms of the reserve checking balances, uh, fire department, five thousand, thirty-two dollars and three cents. Police, fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. USDA, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Highway, twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. Snow reserve, three thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. Tower reserve, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and fifty-three cents. Unemployment, four thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Court reserve, three thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. Eight cents. Expenses for the month of March, uh, the general fund, one hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and eleven cents. Water fund, seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Trust and agency, one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and eight cents. And the sewer, three thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-four cents. So that is the report, uh, the treasury's report uh, for April twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Ray. Just while you're on, Ray, help us clarify a little bit. So the printed report that he read from is account balances of March thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, which is our normal reporting. He mentioned, since it was such an influx and we were familiar with that with early April. It's when we do get the county reimbursement for delinquent property tax folks. That was, they mentioned a big number, but he had a composite, just want to make that clear for everybody. The, the underlying property tax piece was ninety, ninety.
Around ninety-three thousand.
And then we um. Town Rock paid for police coverage. Looks like a couple of bills there and one, it's total of just under fourteen thousand. And then um, Red Oak School paid a pretty big chunk for a school resource officer. And then this time of year, we pull, as is proper and customary and in our budget, we um, transfer some water from um. Some money from the water fund to the general fund because many of our operations um. Our, our, our general staff actually works on water, related water tasks, water administration. So we do all that and it's within village code and it's fine to do that. So those come in now. Those of, those of us have been around this time of year for a while. This used to be the, maybe what, ten years ago, Brent, when um. You would just have look at that and see very, very different numbers and almost be having heart attacks. It's like, you know, it was not good. We've done a lot of hard work to make it where we can get through. This is like a pretty good news. You want thought, we can talk about more in the budget, but whilst in my head. In the delinquent property taxes, we did offer last year, remember um, folks COVID two-shot, meaning um. We would let them pay fifty percent of their tax bill upfront and a little ninety days later, the second half. We got so few takers and none of this appears to be anything related to what I'll call stresses of the last year was a lot of the folks that fall into this category are uh, repeat offenders, I'll call it. It's like, it's some operations just seem to not want to pay until the final, final, final foreclosure moment. And, and now with COVID, I'm not sure when that final, we don't. We don't do the legal work. The county, much to our benefit, picks up all that Ray has to give. The treasurer has to give all the data, all the details, but the county does the heavy lifting and um. It's a great version of shared services because uh, we, we're not stuck with the ninety thousand, ninety-three thousand dollar hole. And um, we don't have to run the legal expenses chasing the owners and all that. So. But Ray, one thing you mentioned, um, if we sign all vouchers, so in your number on the expenses side, say general fund, my sheet says a hundred and nineteen thousand, you mentioned fifty-five thousand. So. What you're doing is some more vouchers have been added to that pack is what you're saying there, Ray? So they're in there to be.
Well, the current vouchers that are there to be paid, uh, that if approved uh, tonight, that I would pay this week. Uh, and most of those came in in the last couple of weeks. For the most part, and uh, they amount to around fifty-five thousand dollars.
New, new, new on, on top of the one nineteen, I'm not following that part.
Uh, no, that, that wouldn't be included uh, for the monthly expenses for March. Uh, that would probably be a combination of March expenses as well as April expenses. So I, I don't know what that split is at this point.
Okay, so but the vouchers we all signed are the only about, there's no other pack of vouchers tonight. It's just, okay, okay. Okay, that was confusing me a little bit. Okay, um, thank you, Ray. So. Thank you, Ray. So. Like I keep saying, a lot of what we do is financial and this looks relatively good to me. I would move that we accept Mr. Toll's report and as I always tell folks, look at the separate. Sheet she generates with. Where each department and where the big expenses are and. My quick review of it Friday was. Everybody's doing well. It's just we will have shortfall and that's what we talked about earlier. We're going to have revenue shortfalls and. But we'll look to that ARP money to help us identify or reimburse that once we identify it. But I would move that we accept this report. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other thoughts, questions? All right, we'll do a raise our hands. We'll accept that report all in favor.
Hi.
Hey. Anybody opposed? Thank you. All right, Mayor Blondell, police report. In the packets, we have the March report. For March twenty twenty one, incident count total was three hundred and ninety six. Breaks out two hundred and eighty nine in the village. One oh five, one hundred and five in the town and two in Tivoli. Tickets issued for the month were sixty seven, thirty five in the village. Thirty two in the town. And I don't see any parking tickets in March. Arrests were six. One in the village and five in the town. And those of us that were in the police reform discussions that that arrests is six. You might remember some numbers, we were trying to get data on and it seemed like. Averages were way higher than six. So it's just something to keep in the back of our heads as we look at that on that. On a very positive side, as I was driving in today, the sergeant texted me something. Apparently, some of our officers, including him, helped. I'm not familiar with the case, but a very harsh motorcycle accident. The person's now coming out of. Coma rehab and left the sergeant a voicemail and I listened to it just before I signed on to the meeting and. Gave me goosebumps and pride. It was the guy. Sounds like he might still have some resulting issues, but he was saying if it wasn't for our guys, he would be six feet underground right now. We we ride there more as EMT, emergency response, more than law enforcement, but. We'll find out more about it, but it was like. Pretty amazing. So we'll get some details and see what that's about. That's in the police world and we do have. You know, talking with our group, we have that police reform project plan that we want to get. I was using the word Gantt chart, something where we start having visuals, visual cues, what we need to do and work on and. Keep that moving ahead. In my other areas, personnel. With regard to Larry's decisions and what I would call our acceptance. We will have to start thinking about staffing and clerk right now as acting clerk, she can still sign and do the. Requisite confirmation of our steps and different things we'll be doing, but. That's not a big part of the clerk's job. It's filing and so forth and. Interacting with different document requests and so forth. So we're going to have to start putting some feelers out and. How best we're going to work on that. Right together, seems like we'll be handing that off a little more. I haven't been able to make meetings lately. Insurance, actually tomorrow I meet with Marshall and Sterling on our renewal policy, so. We'll go through that. It's like a. A lot of coverage and a lot of pages. And Brent, talk more about all municipal departments, particularly highway. Mr. Noonan, you appear next. Do you have papers? Did you get your transmissions where you can?
I did. I did. The zoning and planning. Report. Building permits issued were four certificates of occupancy zero. Certificates of compliance, there were fifteen. Municipal searches were four. Orders to remedy two. There were no stop work orders, no court appearances. Fire inspections were twenty four. Complaints were two. The. Planning board. Yeah, the planning board held a meeting on March eleventh. And it was a site approval granted to property on Firehouse Lane. Zoning Board of Appeals met and it was a variance interpretation for an application on twenty eight Prince Street. And that was tabled until April twenty second. The. The building report. Took in two thousand. Seven hundred, twenty five dollars and seventy cents during the month.
Good. Thank you, Will. Yeah, what this is telling us, we're seeing. A lot of spring activity. So there'll be even more revenue next month, but. I've seen the building inspector walking around with chiefs of plans for renovations and additions and. A lot of people doing a lot of work requiring our attention and all good and. As an aside, I've had calls from one, two, three other municipalities in the county. There's a huge shortage of building inspectors and. We're very proud and protective of our guy. He works a full time day job and works with us twenty hours or less only does and. He's very skilled and comes from across river. So people are trying to find and hire. Building inspectors and it's a lot of demand out there across, you know, we're seeing in Red Oak with construction and. Property ownership changes, but. We're going to keep our guy. We're not going to let him go. Work anywhere else. If you see Clark, Tommy's doing a great job and. We take good care of him. Thank you, Will. Why don't we skip and we'll maybe Mal Corca, you want to? Talk about, I know you did have a printed report. You could just read it to us if you still do.
Great. Exciting, everyone. Okay, so materials management report. For the month of March twenty twenty one, we sold two thousand, three hundred and sixty one in garbage tags and paid out eight hundred and sixty one and seventy cents. We had seven point nine one tons of garbage and three point one tons of recycling. Point four tons of cardboard, one point zero two tons of newspaper and one point six seven tons of commingled. And then for Red Hook Together. April's discussion theme was equity and inclusion and the moderators were Sarah Uglini, Director of the Community Center, and Nick Etzenzo from the Etzenzo Foundation. Mentioned briefly was the PSAB training that due to popular request, the Duchess County Human Rights Commission is considering underwriting half the cost of. There would be twenty two slots total that could be potentially be offered to community leaders and institutions at a reduced rate. The Red Hook Working Group will be meeting on the twenty first, discuss some sort of further grant funding model that may employ a participation refund. Then the library liaison report, the Red Hook Book Library recently applied for and was grounded granted. County funding for their teen summer program, seven thousand dollars adding to the large county grant for all abilities. The library is very grateful to the county for understanding their role in the community. On Earth Day, Saturday, April twenty fifth, the Red Hook Public Library will be collaborating with the Red Hook Community Center. On a Chalking for Families event at ten AM at the town hall, a townwide Earth Day cleanup will begin at one PM. The library's cleanup team will be working in the village. Also, now that trustee Don O'Shea will be president, the Red Hook Public Library is looking for a new board member. And they are beginning to accept applications for the open seat. Further details are available on their website. That's it.
Great, thank you. Very good. One thing, if we could just elaborate on in the Earth Day, April twenty five. That's great. We did reach out to the town and board. What we used to do in prior years was, I think it actually falls, is that your planting day too, Brent?
Yes, twenty fifth, is that the Saturday or is it twenty fourth, the Saturday?
Well, this is twenty fifth and I. Malcor, do you have a calendar rate handy or I'll I'll look for one too, but. Because I thought we were twenty four and planting, which usually is Saturday, but.
You're correct. I was incorrect. It was the twenty fourth is the Saturday, twenty fifth is the Sunday.
So. Event is twenty four, twenty twenty four.
I believe so. I'll check the.
You want to go on a website while we're, you're so fast that that stuff will keep you in the loop. What I was going to say is. It's always been amazing, these Earth Day cleanups, because. We just work in the village center, so I'm glad the library is part of it this year. The snow and different things hide crushed plastic water bottles and cigarette carton. Weird things that. Your eye doesn't totally pick up until you really go looking and getting them out of there just make it look so much better and. We used to fill up big black garbage bags and not too much short, not too long a time. So it'll be great and. In my core of your part of it. Yeah, I think concentrate on the core, like the walking center, you know, it's the the private neighborhoods tend to be self policing in that regard. It's where. You get more, more people and more. People throwing things out and that's great. That's really cool because I'd reach out to Paul Marienthal at Bard and he. We'll see if we can get some Bard students too to help out.
You guys are all correct. It's the twenty fourth on the Saturday, so good for catching that.
Good. All right, because. Good. Thank you, Mal Corca. On the other things, could, I'm not familiar with the acronym PSAB, P I S A B, PSAB.
It's a People's Institute for, oh.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I was just curious.
It's a People's Institute for Survival and Beyond. It's a national organization. They do lots of trainings.
Good, thank you. And what else? Let's see. It's like next month, you probably have a few more things to report on, but not according to what we decided, not materials management, so. Scratch that off and we'll give that to Charlie. Mr. Lang, you want to talk on facilities, grounds, water, energy?
Sure, sure. But did I, did I mention that in order for me to take on the materials management task, it needs to be relabeled in some way and. Given something a little. You know, a little cooler, a little more sort of recycling sustain.
We got, I'm up for that. We were like. I think when we named it, it used to just be garbage, like for what, twenty years?
This bad connotation, connotation.
So that we, eight years ago, whatever we decide, that sounds pretty bad. Let's call it.
I'll I'll throw out a few suggestions at you and we'll we'll see how that goes.
What I like is, I've often thought it'd be kind of fun to shorten a lot of things like. Some places, I'm in communities where they call a public works department, just Red Hook Works, like it's it's not. And there's like some newer terms. Trying to think. But anyway, we'll have to think about it. Um. Anyway, what do you have on the water world there, Mr. Charles?
Yes, I have a report. So. For the Village Red Hook Water Treatment Facilities Monthly Report, during the month of March, the water treatment facility treated. Six million, seven hundred and sixty four thousand, six hundred total gallons. Which is an average of two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred gallons per day. And so we are now over here back down in the nice sort of pre-COVID usage levels, so. This is good to see and I I think we're hopeful that it will stay down at those, at those levels.
Yeah, I think it will. Good.
So and as we do every month, we we sent out four samples for. Analysis of bacteriological issues and they all came back absent. That includes the one sampling location at the tradition. Subdivision. And during the month of March, the water treatment plant used sixty gallons of sodium hypochlorite. Excuse me. So that's an average daily use of one point nine three gallons per day.
Maybe we can do. They attach the daily log and then the. Or something, you know, they're breaking out for its water on the next exhibit, there's a water half. And then a wastewater half, which like we said, is a new piece for our reality.
Right, keeping track of somebody with the water and wastewater systems. But, you know. Generally speaking, everything's. Working well. There's a few issues that need to be followed up on.
Yeah, I was reading it and sometimes I find whimsical and things, but. On the wastewater side, under anoxic, anoxic mixers, it's other deficiency there. It says currently a Midora mixer in place to keep anoxic tank solids moving. May need to consider this in future updates. I'm not even sure what that means, but I know I don't, I don't know what a Midora mixer is, but.
I think the suggestion is that a Midora mixer is not a very good mixer and we need a better.
So it seems like something bad, but I don't know. Midora makes, so I'm going to have to talk to the. The lingo Fernando Dango to see what, what, what is that stuff? We'll probably learn it by next month, but hopefully the Midora mixer doesn't. Go bad in the intervening next day or two. I hate getting that phone call that the Midora mixer is bad.
At least you'll know what he's talking about.
But anyway. On the more serious side of Fernando talked to me today. We all recall, we actually contract with VRI and Fernando is their local consultant. Overall works fairly well. He's looking to take over VRI accounts directly. So I said, well, we'll have to work as a board and see, A, what it means and B, right now our contracts are with VRI. So I told him, tonight's meeting for him to jump in on and we'll have to find. I'm kind of have thinking it might be a Friday brainstorming session first and then bring it to the board somehow. You know, so keep you in the loop there, Charles. See what's up.
Taking it over as C three N D consulting or? We'll have to talk about that.
They're going to do everything in lieu of VRI then?
Well, yeah. To be honest, he called me about five thirty five PM tonight and wondered if he talked tonight in the meeting. I said, no, we get the agenda, we're, you know. So what's up? Because usually, again, when you get these kind of calls, it's generally not good news, you know? He said, no, not nothing bad. It's just he's trying to. And we've had some internal confusion amongst ourselves. We contract VRI, Fernando consults as his own company and. Yeah, it sounds like maybe they're trying to. Give some of their business off to Fernando and relinquish some of their. Exposure, but yeah, we would need, VRI has historically carried the insurance, the heavy lifting part of the contract. And we give him under their auspices, so. But even if you look at this, he's reporting to us. On one page is. A C three N D, so.
That's a nice, nice sheet. It keeps us current of.
Yeah.
You have to do what they have to do.
So we'll have to see what's up with that. We'll talk more about water in a regular part here. I think Mr. Kovalchuk, it's like we've hit everybody, but you're a piece of it. So you ready?
Yes, sir, I am. I would the village green monthly report, current balances of the village green committee's related budget accounts are as follows. Community beautification. You have a balance of three thousand, three hundred and thirty six dollars and six cents. The Shaggy contractual were in the hole for three thousand, seven hundred dollars. That's because of some. Who in the general business district and some emergency. Removal we had to do as a result of storms and the village green checking account, as Ray had mentioned in his report. Is four thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and ninety two cents. There were no village green committee meetings held during the month of March. However, the village queen committee is preparing for the annual spring planting and Arbor Day celebrations. We do have a date set. For April twenty fourth. At nine o'clock and we will be meeting at Richard Abraham's Memorial Park. Ten trees have been ordered from Schittles Nursery on March fifteenth and sites have been selected for trees at locations on Church Street. Old Post Road, Park Avenue, Fraley Street, Bennett Road and Richard Abraham's Memorial Park. A memorial would be, memorial tree will be planted at Abraham's Park to honor Harold and Gladys Fell. For their years of community service and stewardship of Abraham's Park. The village also received notification from the Arbor Day Foundation congratulating the village for earning recognition. As a twenty twenty Tree City USA, even though this is twenty twenty one. This is the 19th year the Village of Red Hook has been recognized as a Tree City USA. Arbor Day Foundation mentioned that the residents of the Village of Red Hook should be proud to live in a community that makes planting and care of trees a priority. And as always, residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted on their right of ways or for volunteering for planting days or making a donation to support the Village Green Committee's various community beautification projects may contact David Pearson, myself, or the village clerk.
Hey Brent, could I interrupt you a moment, please?
Absolutely.
Thanks on the reminder, um, Mrs. Gladys Fell, we referenced, we're going to plant the tree and Harold and Gladys's. I always knew her as Mrs. Fell, but she, she passed away the past, maybe a month or so. And with the era of COVID, it seems like it's unnoticed. People can pass away and we don't really hear, hear or see too much. But I would like to ask the board and the clerk at this point, I'd like to leave a blank page in her memory within the village board minutes. So it'd be a segue here as you're speaking because I had that in my brain when we were doing the minutes earlier, but moved on without that, but many of us remember Harold, he passed away, maybe I don't know, six, seven years ago or he was key in the park and his wife was always there with him and they lived right across the street. So they were good park attendants and great stewards for us. So yeah, it's a, with all your consent, we'll leave a blank page in memory of Mrs. Gladys Fell. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll move on to the Highway Monthly Report for the March, for the month of March, the Village Highway Department began picking up brush and leaves during the week of April 5th and will resume monthly pickup on the first Monday of each month. Residents are reminded to place laundry and brush in separate piles, curbside and not in the street. Please limit brush piles to one per household per month and limit the size of brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet. Highway Department will not pick up tree branches larger than six inches in diameter and brush that includes tree trunks, stumps, garbage or construction material will not be picked up. Neighbors are encouraged to share a brush pile. This will make pickup easier and quicker. Highway Department will be sweeping streets during the last week of April, beginning of May. Residents are reminded to sweep, rake, sand and gravel from the lawn edges onto this side of the street. And please place sand and gravel in a row, not in a pile to facilitate more efficient cleanup. And that is the street sweeper is not designed to pick up mounds of material, but can pick up a row of material much easier. Custom Street Services LLC of Hyde Park has been awarded the contract to sweep village streets and the municipal parking lot at a rate of $1,200 per day. And this should take two to four days. We did budget for this. The Village of Red Hook received a memo from the New York State DOT on March 16th. And we received it on the 24th detailing the state fiscal year 2020, 2021 apportionment for the CHIPS paved New York and extreme winter recovery programs. New York State DOT has made available the following amounts reduced by 5% in the January 19th, 2021 apportionment schedule. So I'll quickly go through this and this had to do also with our adjustment on the new budget that Ed brought up. So our new for apportionment for CHIPS is now $75,965.33, down 5%. From January, that number was eight, $8,346 paved New York. We actually went up. I think they split the extreme winter recovery, put some into the paved New York program, which is good because we could use that the same way we use CHIPS and that is $8,722.31 and the extreme winter recovery program went from $14,000. Like I said, I think they split our January apportionment in March, extreme winter recovery apportionment is $6,824.31, leaving our new apportionment, which has been reduced from $109,800,861.81 to the new number of $91,511.95. So they were kind of warning us that we maybe hit 20% reduction. So I guess 5% doesn't look as bad as 20%. But no revenues generated from the sale of scrap metal during the month of March. Our revenue generated in, in this fiscal year is $3,995.05 or about $2,000 over what we anticipate is earning. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $35,455.17 has been gentrated. Proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway Water and Materials Management Departments. Residents or businesses interested in donating scrap metal may contact the Village Highway Department at 758-8600 or the Village Clerk's Office. In the Highway Department, personnel will assess property orders by picking up scrap metal upon request. The Red Hook Infrastructure and Inter Municipal Task Force. We've been extremely busy and I'm not going to go through everything that we did, but I will say that we met on March 5th, 8th, 12th, 17th, 19th, 25th and 26th. Meetings were conducted via telephone conference calls and in person at the Red Hook Village Building. And we did. We made arrangements and, and detailed the bond resolution that we passed. We made conference calls in New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation and I think Ed will maybe talk about this later in in the meeting, but we think we've making some good progress in securing some very low interest, actually 0% interest financing, both long-term and short-term from E F C. So we are going to the procedure now of filing our paperwork and moving forward with that. We also, I also had a meeting at Delaware Engineering, who's our village engineer, to discuss grant opportunities to the New York State Assembly and New York State Governor, regional offices. We're hoping to get in line for some SAM's grants possibly with the new budget. They, New York's new New York State Budget re-apportioned or re-instituted a $2 billion infrastructure segment. So we're, we're trying to tap into that as well. Again, more, more E F C's called this. I'll just leave this for this will be a matter of public record. Anybody wants to see what we have, we've been up to is, it's a lot of phone calls, a lot of begging for money. And preparing our, our bond resolutions and the other paperwork we had to do to award the bid sooner than later. The Village Red Hook Water and Sewer Administration Project, an estimate to exercise water main valves throughout the village is being prepared. I see three N D environmental consulting for review and approval by the mayor and village board. Knows as of a March 18th memo in the library. In Red Hook Village, Red Hook Town Wi-Fi Digital Equity Project. We had an initial meeting on March 26th at the Red Hook Public Library to discuss a project that includes the library, town and village Red Hook provide Wi-Fi service to portions of the village and town. Funding obtained by the Red Hook Library will be used for hardware to extend existing Wi-Fi services at the library and the town of Red Hook Recreation Park. The library has prepared a description of the project and associated costs for the village board trustees review and consideration. And I think they are trying to get on the agenda probably next month. We'll see. On the Inter Municipal Task Force, Charlie and I both sit on as village representatives and members. There were no meetings held. The task force during the month, the month of March. And they're currently preparing draft legislation for short-term rentals in the town of Red Hook. Town's attorneys and their planner are currently preparing this and hopefully they'll have a meeting and I think the discussion will continue on the town board level regarding short-term rentals. One more. Is there some of the committees I sit in on the town representing the Village of Red Hook? The Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, there were no meetings. Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, no meetings on that, but the current balance of the Preservation Fund as of March 31st is $2,034,063.86. This has grown substantially since the beginning of COVID, I think. A lot of real estate transactions, so it's, it's helping the C P F quite a bit.
We need to find some nice farm and preservation projects in the village.
Well, we, we, we need to find projects in the Village of Red Hook. There's quite a, quite a few projects and properties listed in the project plan. And if we can move those forward, because there seems to be a lot of projects that we could do with in the village itself, a lot, lot with farm labor, which is the number one priority for the C P F. Is that me?
Not sure.
The Salkia Watershed Community, there were no meetings held during the month of March issue 14. The Salkia Watershed Newsletter was circulated. This issue can includes riparian buffers and how to protect them, connect and connecting the Salkia and Red Hook's drinking water aquifer. It's quite interesting for all those interested in our sewer, how it protects our drinking water. The Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Program or the L W R P Working Group. There were no working group meetings held during the month of March and the L W R P Working Group continues to wait for review and comments from the New York State Department of State for organizing your public informational meeting for the Red Hook Community. Review current proposed updates to the local waterfront revitalization plan of the Town of Red Hook. The Northern Dutchess Alliance Executive Committee and the local government representative, there were no N D A executive committee meetings held during the month of March. And the last one would be the Village of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee. We did not have a meeting, but there's been a number proposed amendments to the zoning code. And I've listed in the past and they're the same right now. Copies of the proposed amendments have been sent to Rodneyhausen Shaw and Paula Darrell for review, comments and preparation. A proposed draft legislation, secret documents and Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development Approval in accordance with New York State Statute 239M. Draft legislation is being prepared and is anticipated to be presented to the Board of Trustees and the general public on May 10th, 2021. That's our monthly board meeting. And that is it.
Thank you, Brent. Feedback. Hello. Okay, we've been through department and committee reports and a lot of other things before that. So getting a little bit late here. In the regular business section of the meeting, we have budget discussion and vote. We held the public hearing. Let me just grab some documents here from our modeling spreadsheet and recap what we talked about a bit. When Brent was doing his report, he was confirming that CHIPS revision of our allocations. Like I said, we're, that's something I see we need to change in our budget, but as long as we put the same number in revenue as we put in expense, it doesn't change any tax cap or anything of the tax levy itself. We are still below the 1.31. And if you look at it, our modeling spreadsheets are last year, our mill rate, which is the charge we make per $1,000 reassessed value. Last year was $6,035. This year it's going to be $6.40 if we stay with the model as it's been circulated. Which when you do that math, it's actually very, very small actual levy increase to the individual taxpayer, which is that little bump. There's been a slight increase in our base assessed value number. So it picks up a little less need to increase each individual a little bit. It's, you're talking micro percentages here, but it's still, still in our favor. So we'll take it. We're required to have a public hearing. We listened and worked on that. The only two things I can see are the CHIPS and we talked about before the American Rescue Plan. But my recommendation is we just modify the CHIPS by motion, the A R P. I think what we could do is say we'll place that when we know what it's going to be. I'm hopeful it hits sometime this fiscal year was, was the first half. That saves us certain complicated budget work, but um, but I think if we park it in that, I don't know if the treasurer is still on. Ray and I were talking about putting it in that A 2770 when it comes in as unclassified. And like we said, then we go to work finding our shortfall areas and getting a number and then by board vote, we would allocate what we're taking against that new money coming in. But that's, to me, that's not a budget adjustment. It's kind of a budget position or budget outlook. It's not going to change our tax, taxing and levying piece of the budget this for next year. And again, for next year, we're not sure when we'll get it, but it's not good practice to budget expenses against money you don't have in, in any real form. And I think we do a similar version of that next year. If, if we're not being eaten up by COVID expenses, you know, we could look at some programs. I think we could be creative. One could argue that a community celebration or certain community-wide events help the economic development of the village and you could make an argument, you could use some of the rescue plan money for something like that instead of identifying 26 restaurants who's lost, you know, a hundred thousand dollars each last year and, you know, trying to divide that into the money we're getting. It's, we're not gonna help them much with our money, but um. So to do it properly, we have the general fund and we've Brent's detailed recap of CHIPS. That's where that works. And then we have the sewer enterprise budget and the water enterprise budget. I have a resolution, which I hope I can find in my pack to adapt the budget. I deliberately left a blank in case we made some changes as I couldn't predict before I took the incentive to fill in the numbers. Like I keep saying, the big issue, the main issue is the general fund was staying in the cap. We have the good fortune of the controllers looking over our shoulder. This year we got into some random polls. I haven't heard much from Ray. Have you heard anything from him?
No, I have not.
Yeah, you know, we have good confidence on our modeling software and our spreadsheet and so what I'm prepared to do is, if you can reference, I don't know if you want me to put it on the screen, but in the general fund category, I want to move that we adjust the CHIPS revenue line, which is, let me see, I thought I tagged it here on my sheet. Bear with me a second. Looks like I did not consolidate highway. There it is. Yeah, I did. It's revenue line on general A 3501. I want to put a new number there instead of 110,000 and then in order to make that work within the expense side of the budget. We have an expense budget line, A 5110.3. And like I keep saying, as long as we match them up, we're good. We're not changing anything in the levy part. Brent, do you have a thought, you know, as you're reading your detailed report from that most recent letter? The true CHIPS is what cost 76,000. The paved New York is roughly 9,000. The E W R, we're always a bit mystified how we actually grab the winter weather damage money. We tend to think if somebody hit a bridge because it was icy, you know, something, if we plowed something over. We do that once in a while with street signs, but they're never big enough dollars to, to worry about. I don't know, Brent, if you have a comfort level number, it looks to me like if we took 76,000 plus nine, we'd that might be what the highway could work, but I'm also okay with picking 91.5 and just putting the same number in both income and expense. That would work for me if it works for the rest of the board. You know, it's like we said, usually what highway does is they get contracts, what they want to do. They need to know what they can work with, but it's, do you have a thought, Brent? Were you, would feel more?
Yeah, I mean, I, I put in 91. Yeah, I mean, I I put in ninety one thousand.
Yeah.
And then changed a hundred and ten to ninety one.
Okay.
And I don't, but we we've never been able to use extreme winter recovery and ask for major.
Yeah.
Blowout. To say that our our water main break was a cause of that, but.
Yeah, yeah, it was. I could live with it. So we're saying ninety one thousand. So what I have to do is a formal motion, people. I'd move that we take the tentative budget and the revenue line. A thirty five oh one state aid dash consolidate consolidate highway had reduced that from a hundred and ten thousand to ninety one thousand. And at the same time, the expense line fifty one ten dot three, that's currently at a hundred and ten. Reduce that likewise to ninety one thousand, only because the state has reallocated and advised us post tentative budget of these changes. I would move that. Is there a second? Any other thoughts, discussion? It's a little bit esoteric, but uh, it's the right move. And like I said, I changed it once in my modeling and on the first full year budget worksheet general, that levy number, the one million two hundred ninety one thousand six hundred eighty dollar does not change with those changes because of the net zero effect on a budget. And just repeat our tax cap calculation, we could do it at one point two nine two million dollar levy increase, so not not, I'll scare everybody, we'll have really have heart attack. That's not a levy increase, that's that's our combined levy. As compared to last year's one point two seven five million. This year we're looking at one point two nine one and change, so we're within. And like I said, if if your customers slash your residents ask you the the actual mill rate increase is a little bit less, it's about half of the one point three one percent number because we got some bump in value base. So I think I talked myself out of, I had a motion a second on. And I would ask for a vote. I'll call it for roll, just so you have a blundale. I vote yes. Uh, Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Kowalczek.
Yes.
Ms. Carval.
Yes.
And Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Good, thank you. That's the one change I can see. Like I keep saying, the ARP, I don't think we we don't have to. We have a line with, if we have when it happens, we'll plug it in and work with it. What it means in the end, when what I want to pencil into um, the general fund adoption motion is um, let me just make sure you go balance here. Two two zero two two zero four eight oh yeah, I'm looking at our revenue numbers, two billion two hundred twenty thousand four hundred eighty. And if you look at our expense in general, it's two million two hundred twenty thousand four hundred eighty, so that's the test they match up. So I'm going to fill that in where I have blanks in the adopt budget page. Bear with me a second, so my handwriting is legible. Two million two two zero four eight zero. Then to be proper and correct, we circulated water budget workshop, we went over it and there's nothing I can recommend changing here now. I'm still always in this quandary here, Ray report, the money we have in that USDA RD short term asset reserve fund is like a hundred and thirty three, a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars right now. And we're obligated to put twenty five thousand a year. We have to find some cleaner way to not put twenty five thousand in to have all the trouble getting it out of a CD, you know, that's an operational thing. My recommendations to Ray has been um, if something, we don't move the money toward the end of the next fiscal year and just start tapping it when things that qualify for short term asset. If we're spending that money, take it out of and keep it net accounting on our side. Let's say we spend twelve thousand on short term assets instead of moving twenty five over to M and T and pulling twelve back and all the resulting paperwork, just move thirteen over to M and T at the end of, near the end of fiscal year. So we're not touching the money a million times and doing all the paper trail and it's all legit. It's just um, instead of paying it the first day of the fiscal year to the CD, wait till very near the end of the last days would be something to keep in mind. So with the water budget, I show it in my paperwork, five five three, five hundred fifty three thousand three hundred, and that matches the expenses. I'm going to pencil that in.
Five five three and?
Yeah, um, I'll give you the exact, I'm just.
Five five three three hundred.
Yes, yes. And then sewer. The the budget for next year was showing forty nine thousand five hundred dollars. And when we're talking about ARP money, what I would plant in the board's mind and mine too is I think, well, we know that there's a tag that is supposed to be the ARP can help with sewer and water infrastructure. We know it's not going to help in our big sewer project. It's not significant size enough, but we might be able to offset some of the immediate new costs with sewer now that we're maybe having to replace a Madora pump or whatever that is, right? It's a, you know, something where we could what's left after the COVID reimbursement to ourselves, we can move to sewer. So what I'm filling in here is general fund budget, two million two hundred twenty thousand four hundred eighty dollars. Water budget, five hundred thirty, actually five hundred fifty three thousand three hundred dollars, sewer fund, forty nine thousand five hundred. Anybody else have any recommended changes from their reviews audits?
Just a reminder that when the sewer comes forward, we're going to have to do some, I guess, we had talked about maybe starting collecting fees prior to the end of construction, so we could start paying for operation. Um, we have for our first payment and interest payment. Depending on where the funding come from, we are playing with models based on USDA funding, so where's this will find us that that should be still looking further once we get a better hand on the funding.
Yeah, good point. What he's talking about, I think some of us touched on in one of the workshops, um, at a point roughly two years out, I want to say December twenty twenty three is when we're going to be like substantial completion, uh, maybe final completions of the sewer project. And then that upcoming year is when the first bond payments become due. Brent, we'll probably have to run some new models. To see what that is and thinking I think we might, if we could use some of that ARP money to offset some of the more immediate operating costs that we're looking at, um, it could impact some of the calculations we were doing on that number. I think we have to go through the apportionment and through the um, that plan report and see what we got there.
Yeah, I think the mayor plan report's been, but we'll talk about that later and it's been.
Yeah. So let's see, let me get the red resolution. Look here, bear with me.
Ed.
Yep.
Just a quick question here. What uh, is your total income and expense for the general fund again? What number are you using?
Two million two hundred twenty thousand four hundred eighty dollars.
But you've reduced the CHIPS by nineteen thousand?
Yeah, but when I run it, Ray, there's no net change because I reduce the revenue and I do the same exact reduction on the expense, so they balance.
But the totals would be nineteen thousand dollars less on both. Is that not correct? So actually, the total uh, income cost would be less than it was last year by a couple of thousand dollars or more, because you'd be at two hundred and two million two hundred and one thousand nine hundred and forty or nine hundred and eighty dollars. Because that still adds up to the, you know, to whatever the total is because you reduced it by nineteen thousand.
I'm thinking.
What was your number, Ray?
Well, you, that total, you you've reduced it by nineteen thousand on both sides.
Right.
So you'd be at two two million two hundred and one thousand nine hundred and forty, I guess. Or thirty, whatever it is.
Let me do a share screen because I'm looking at the levy change. Hold on a minute.
Yeah, I just wondered if you'd made any other alterations to keep the number.
I think what I'm doing, I'm making the motion. Hold on, did I go in? Bear with me a second, guys. Hold on. I'm going to share screen and just, let's see if I can get you. Can you guys see the budget now?
Yes.
I'm one one zero point three.
Okay, so levy doesn't change, but that did change, yes. Ray, thank you. So we have to do a correction here, folks. Two million two oh one four eight oh. Yeah, so this is the number, kind of a not to exceed number here. And this stays the same. Yeah, so you're right, the gross application does get reduced, but the levy get affected, so thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. Let me click save. Okay, so you have to modify our resolution in that general fund line, two million two hundred one thousand four hundred eighty. It looks like it will be. I'm going to change something. Lara had put number nine to be the tax cap rescission, but I want to adopt the budget before I rescind it. So we send, so let's make number nine, the tax capped adopt. Ten was the consolidated reorganization, number eleven will be um, cap revision, crack cap rescission rather.
So what what's the budget?
The number, two million two oh one.
No, the resolution number.
Oh. Number nine. So I'm just putting it chronologically. So let me read it out loud, just so we have this right. Nine twenty twenty one, adopt twenty twenty one, twenty two budget, whereas the village board has received and reviewed the tentative budget and held a public hearing on April twelfth, twenty twenty one. Whereas funding lines and expenses have been developed, reviewed and established in board workshop meetings and the public hearing to reflect goals of the village, its income projections and expenses from trending in history. Whereas since the presentation of the tentative budget, the federal government adopted the American Rescue Plan with implications and revenue that are not possible to trend or establish at this point in time. Whereas these developments may require formal edits to the budget and operations in the next fiscal year, but in accord with the parameters of the ARP's intention intentions. Whereas the village's budget has three budget areas, general fund, water budget and sewer budget. Therefore, be resolved, the resulting general fund budget will be within the New York State control of tax cap limit of one point three percent, one point three one percent. The general fund budget will be two million two hundred one thousand four hundred eighty dollars. And be it further resolved, the water fund budget is five hundred fifty three thousand three hundred dollars and the sewer fund budget is forty nine thousand five hundred dollars. And those general fund, water fund and sewer fund budgets are hereby adopted with the mayor and treasurer to be fully authorized to proceed accordingly accordingly by coordinating role and warrant processes along with transmittal to the county for printing. And I would that we consider adopting resolution number nine. That offers motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We had a bunch of discussion in free form as normal was for our operation. Um, any other discussion or thoughts or questions? I think with Ray's help, we got that thing corrected fortunately, and thank you. One caveat, I mentioned earlier, I don't have a section wording here, but I don't see any need for us to do two payment plan option this year. It was so it was such a low volume of users and um, we're not, you know, it's was a ton of internal software and programming and office work, but uh, I don't really see it, so I've got that's not in the resolution here, but right now we're just adopting our budget. So there's motion a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Blundale, I vote yes. Kowalczek.
Yes.
Uh, Carval.
Yes.
Noonan.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Good, got that. And the last thing I think is, well, it's not the last thing. While we're on budgets though, we're going to renumber the rescission to number eleven. This is a routine, since we gave ourselves the ability to exceed and now we're not intending to exceed. This is straightforward. Whereas the village of Red Hook passed the enabling local law to allow a tax cap override, which we did many months ago. Whereas the final version of the budget has remained within the one point three one percent tax cap. Whereas we need to rescind the override law passed in twenty twenty one, therefore be it resolved that the village board here in votes to rescind the tax cap override law passed in twenty twenty one. I make it by motion. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Was that Noonan?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion thoughts? It's, we're there, so that's good. I'll call it a blundale, vote yes. Noonan.
Yes.
Kowalczek.
Yes.
Lang.
Yes.
Charval.
Yes.
Getting better at that. All right, here's kind of an easy lightweight thing and try to get this wrapped. Each year around this time, spring cleaning and promotion of our material management, excellent pay you throw program. That's your sales pitch, Mr. Lang. We do a spring discount where if people buy ten tags of either color, we give them one free. We've done it in the past, it kind of boosts cash flow for the end of the year and helps our patrons slash residents slash customers. But we need to do it by board con currents. We do also still offer if people do the remote touch, you know, call, email, show up at the door, we, if they buy more than ten, we also offer one free, trying to just reduce some of the personal hand to hand face to face interaction. Uh, so that one's still enforced, but this one's a little different. So I think it's worth it and it boosts up when Mal Corcoran reported, you know, the average sales were close to making budget. But if we sell a bunch more between now and May thirty first, we get a few more cash flow bucks. I would move that we authorize that one free for ten buys, spring cleanup discount sale, quote unquote. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
I have a question, Ed.
Who's that? Yeah, okay.
Yes. I would, I might be the recipient of something like this. Should I recuse myself?
Oh, no, we all are. At least I hope we are. I know Brent. Oh, no, we all are. At least I hope we are. I know Brendan's a customer. We haven't put my clerk on the spot.
Just want to be sure. We read the ethics thing before.
Yeah, and I sort of sort of like other things. It's it's across the board. General, if you own the uh tag printing company or something like that, then you'd have to recuse.
Okay, I don't. For the record, I don't.
Okay, but thanks for thinking that. So we had some discussion. It's kind of a lovely thing, but one day I ask, uh, Mal Corca.
Yes.
Brent, going in foremost time around. Lang.
Hey, how how come I don't get a Charlie or a Charles?
Charlie sounds a little too. Charles.
Too friendly, too familiar.
Brent must work like.
Yes.
Charlie, sorry.
Yes.
And Mr. Noonan, you can vote, so.
Yes.
All right. Two more things. Sewer update. Brent was reporting in depth in his report and. What we did this past week was um over the weekend, I sent some more spreadsheet and different info off to EFC. They've written back acknowledging receipt like Brent said, we're in the game trying to get zero percent interest on both the short term and the long term money. Which far offsets any low interest capacities that RD could answer. But at the same time, we're trying to run a bunch of options at the same time. While we still have this early May deadline toward contracts, so it's. You know, a lot of things up in the air. Uh, EFC, like it says, acknowledged receipt. Um, they asked us today for an affidavit of publication. We gave them the notice that we published in the Freeman, but they want to something it's. Uh, a clerical thing we have to get for them and they're going to be be meeting in committee. They did ask interestingly, um, remember the state controllers audit gave us a couple of bangs on um. Separation duty, I think was clerk and treasurer and they want to know if we acted on all those things. And the answer is yes, we worked on everything. Now is I think. Two years ago, I can't remember when that even was, well, to pull up some records and react on that. They did ask for indications of indebtedness, which I used over the weekend from our AUD. We're a relatively low debt, especially since this building is almost paid off and then. The two water phases qualifies qualifies as exceptions or exemptions to debt because they consider infrastructure. And it is a necessity, so they don't really whack us on those debts. So we're going to keep the pressure on and hopefully we get something in the not too distant future with. You know, it'd be zero percent, then we can run those models and a whole nother set of work we have to mail out to all the customers in the district and. Get them into some virtual meeting format and explain the details. Once we have the details firmed up. On the Brent, if you wanted to jump anything.
No, we're we're just because we're we're getting close with the EFC, it doesn't mean that we're slacking off another department. So we have full intention of. Submitting applications to USDA. I mean, the hopes that they could. They wouldn't wouldn't be able to better the the rates of the loan, but they may be able to give us a grant. So um if we can look at a grant and look at zero percent interest financing and see what's the better deal for us. Um, we'll certainly take it. So we're we're still continuing to look for every and all money to help reduce this this project. So after we're done with these essential things, we have to work. So the paperwork for I think the the data anyway, ready for to go out to USDA. We also have that the help of um Assembly Member Delgado behind us. So, you know, I think. I didn't want to knock him down.
Actually, today, Brent, just so you know, we didn't get to talk, but. Some of his Washington people called me today and I just gave them an update and so forth. But again, there's a it's a paperwork challenge. We asked our engineers to complete a new form. I haven't seen that come in. Have you, Brent?
No, I think she was. She just did the map plan report revision so we can get the apportionment stuff going, so.
Have you seen that?
Yeah, she sent that out this afternoon.
Oh, really? Oh.
Yeah, the map plan report.
Yeah, I didn't see that come in. Yeah, then the other update is the water loop update. Remember, we sell water at a markup rate to the new tradition housing project down by. Old Farm Road, off Old Farm Road, and we've had this great project working and I think they're going to start construction this spring here soon. We're um the two private landowners on the. The loop, I'll explain that more from a corker. Um, right now, our system feeds the tradition project through kind of old mains in the Redwood State section of our village. Which is a little bit dicey when you have one source, one point pushing through all your water. So the loop will run down route nine from like the Ulster Savings Bank area there. Toward Hardskull Plaza and cross by Old Farm Roads connection point down there. And um the deal we have with the two owners, it's corporate entities of Baywright and Ross families that own the land there. They're paying. Bulk of the cost, meaning the construction, the permits, the. Not the permits, the um engineering, construction, land clearing. And um it looks like it's going to happen in the next month or so, so that'll be good. We felt as a board that it does two things for us. It gives us more customers. It's one reason. You know, the water budget looks pretty good and then be um. Gives us a little backup and and then with an alternate route for water to flow into their system. And all water systems are better if you have loops in general, helps keep sediment and different things from doing weird buildups and weird dead spots, dead ends. So we're I'm supposed to meet them tomorrow and just firm up a couple of things with your contractor. Taking out the bond and different things to cross under route nine, but just so everybody knows, it does not include any disruption of route nine. It's going to be directional drilled under the highway by their contractors, so there'll be no traffic jams or anything like that or anticipated. So that's happening.
You know, it's expected by our engineers as well.
Yeah, it's we have easements. We have probably last summer, we signed. You know, the board gave authorization to sign contracts and easements and they tried to get it built in the fall, but didn't happen. Then the winter hit, so now they're reactivated. I think that'd be kind of cool when it's done, though. That's all I had on my sheet. Two hours are lapsed. I know I see some names. We have in every board meeting. Two things is the board gets to talk quite a bit, but if any board member needed to say more or. At some point wants to be considered by us, board can go first, then we'll do public comment. I think we all talked a lot already or uh talked out and then um. Water, let's see, public comment. Is anybody listening from? The outside of the board that has a question or comment? I think I saw a lot of names that were there. I don't see them anymore. It looks like just names I recognize as us or parts of us here. So as I said, no comment. Um, we do have, just reminded this week, another workshop, we'll do. A few things we mentioned. One thing I want to talk about too, the workshop more is um Will and I sat with the fire company. We'll work on that a little more, but that doesn't expire till May thirty one, so we have a little time there. But we have some thoughts we'll pass along. Other than that, anybody else? I think we I saw a lot of signatures on the vouchers. So I'd make the motion that we pay bills after audit. Is there a second? On favor, just raise your hand. I. And then um I think I saw four sigs, so if somebody can sneak in tomorrow morning early or whatever, um, so.
That would be me. Yes, so I'll get it.
Everybody has such unique handwriting. I was like, I don't know who's who here. It's like, but um and then um. Mr. Kowalcheck, unless you can think of something else. You might pull it in just. I'm sorry, I'm making noise. Go ahead. Sorry.
I can make a motion there when you turn this evening's meeting.
Second.
Okay, I think we would all concur and I think by raise of hands and I I glad everybody and talk soon.
Good night.
Good night, all.